Please stand for 1:40. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you want to add the Oregon Petal Posse onto your agenda, that would be under new business?
Yes.
Is there any other changes?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of new business, item one, Oregon Petal Posse.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on down to best speakers' communication with informational items. We have the FCC pack. You have that in here twice.
Yes, it is. It should have been taken off.
Marked off on the under new business on F. And this is more corrections facilities. We'll have their minutes and we'll also have a meeting.
Slide 20.
20 seconds. Move on down to county commander, the county commander's invitation.
If you want wins, that's the place to go. It's a dream board.
Hot dog stand request on town property, Candace Buck. Anybody know anything about that?
She came in requesting to put a hot dog stand on either the town parking lot during the week, during swim hours or late afternoon hours, or up at the, um, up by the swimming pool. I told her to come here and discuss it with the council, but she didn't come, so I...
Okay. Let's start that one then.
Dawn, was there anything in writing or did...
No, she just was gonna come and talk and she was gonna bring something.
And then, did she talk to Janine or did you refer to Janine at all?
Well, basically for stuff like that, you just, um, you just, because I did discuss it with Janine, basically what you need to do is make sure you have all of your health stuff and the stuff from the state for food cameras.
And then the town obviously has to make a decision whether to allow it on town property or not. So it's not really a zoning decision per se because it's actually, we're the landlord if we're gonna allow it or not, so that's really kind of your issue.
No, she bought the properties and then she would have to go through planning.
Right. So if you decide to do it, you of course...
We have different vendors and different events, I mean, and she didn't get really a, I would ask for a written proposal.
I did ask her and she said she was going to hand it out to you tonight.
Sound, we can bring it up soon, but the sooner the better, I don't know, which question.
And obviously you'd wanna see a liability to give her insurance and all of those kind of...
And then she had to bring all her certificates that she got to show the council members the best...
Move down to state revenue sharing, public hearing and discussion. I have, I don't have anything in here on that.
Basically every year we have to have a public hearing that, uh, and the councils will have to make a motion if we want to accept state revenue sharing funds from the state of Oregon, which includes the cigarette, the liquor, the marijuana and taxes. So, um, we have to do it in a public meeting and then follow it up later by a resolution to, um, accept those. If we don't accept that, that's a huge amount out for budget that we have to...
Is there, when is the deadline for that, that has to be done?
The 30th. Everything has to be done the 30th.
Okay, so we need to do it tonight?
Yeah.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 955.
You do need to open, you first need to open up the public hearing and if there's anybody that wants to comment on it, they first have to do that, then you close the public hearing, then go to resolution.
But does that mean a separate date or something?
No, that's today, they all happen at once.
So as of now, we'll open up the public hearing, the fund last week, revenue sharing and discussion. Do we hear any from the public on this?
Well, I think if it's funds that you can receive, let's say yes.
I'm not aware of anybody that ever turns those down.
You don't have to go through the procedure though.
What is the text of the resolution? Like, somebody could just read the resolution?
Oh, sure, absolutely. You wanna read it, you wanna read it?
The resolution?
955.
Yeah. In the matter of receiving state revenues for the fiscal year 2019-2020, whereas the town of Lakeview Budget Committee recognizes the receipt of the Oregon Revenue Sharing Dollars as and whereas, a public hearing on state revenue sharing was held before the town council on June 25, 2019 with a time set aside for public questions and comments. Now therefore be resolved pursuant to ORS 221.770, the town of Lakeview hereby elects to receive state revenues for the fiscal year of 2019-2020. Do you hear a motion?
I, Mr. Mary, you need to close, you need to see if there's any other public comment then close the public hearing first before you do that.
All right, we will now close the public hearing.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Have we accepted those funds for the previous fiscal year?
Yes.
For a long time.
Thank you. I don't see a problem accepting them again. Business as usual.
Okay, now I'm doing a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt resolution 955.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Now we've got the ones down, Ginger, we want to get the funds.
Yes, I'm gonna give a little predispose to go.
Yes, oh yes, sorry, I didn't know the years, Ray.
That's perfect.
In the matter of making the budget appropriations for fiscal year 2019-19, resolution 956, whereas the town budget for 2018, 2019 did not anticipate any over, anticipate over expenditures in funds and transfers from line items and necessary to cover unanticipated expenditures. Now therefore it be resolved, the town council of Lakeview, Oregon, authorizes the following budget transfers for 2019-19, and so...
I thought we were gonna have year-to-date, um, report.
I could not give that out today. I had three minutes to spare to get everything else done today.
It makes it real hard to pass budget stuff without numbers, from my perspective. I don't feel comfortable passing this until I know where end-of-year-to-date numbers are.
This is transferring appropriations, it's not our...
Yes, which was discussed in our budget meeting yesterday.
Essentially, these monies are still available from these funds that we're capturing from, going to, um, we definitely have a bill for a certain amount in, well, two, three different amounts. So they need to be paid, obviously men's wages and men's medical, then on life, and then the other one, attorney fees, which we expect, so, um, I don't see any need to pull this up, I mean, it's year-to-date, we'll hopefully stay on top of it tomorrow as we go forward, but, um, resolution 956, I make a motion to approve the amount of making budget appropriations for fiscal year 2019-19.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
No opposed, thanks. Okay, who wants to vote for a favor?
One.
All right, before resolution 957? In the matter of adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Lakeview for the fiscal year 2019-2020, making appropriations, imposing and terrorizing taxes and levying taxes.
There was one change that I made today from yesterday's meeting, and that was, um, I met with Darrell Anderson this morning, and one of the projects that needs immediate follow-up is working on the, uh, Dudley well, so that we don't lose the water rights to that, and he anticipated $40,000, um, so I put $40,000 in that fund, um, from the carry forward to be allowed to, um, we're gonna put a seal in that well, so...
What, you hope it's retained all right? Because that, that'll be enough to satisfy the state's, well, resources.
Keep it going. We're still gonna have to do some more work out there.
Which hopefully, that water, that's your plan covering what?
Uh, it doesn't cover that.
Some of the best geothermal. And then we hopefully, in policy, we'll see if we can reduce some of the...
So that, that portage was coming from where, just contingency?
Oh, right, carry forward, yeah, yes.
Now, is that, for the council members that were not present during that, that was the well that was the kind of the long-term fight with the greenhouse, so it was something we acquired quite a while back, spent a lot of money in litigation, and if you don't maintain it, if you don't keep doing it, then you lose that, and that's our other really big geothermal, so if the town has interest in expanding its geothermal at some point in the future, that's your kind of next source to do it, and it's, it's a permit that we own, so it's not something we're having to develop any further. We have to maintain it, but keep upgrading, we may get operational at some point, but if we don't follow up with that, we lose it completely, and the likelihood of ever getting it back is fairly low.
So, I missed the budget meeting last night, but having reviewed a little bit this afternoon, I, it looks like all the changes are what we talked about in the previous budget meeting, so I make a motion to approve resolution 957.
I'm not...
I'll second.
Want to make a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye. I haven't had nearly enough time, but we just got this, like, well, I got me this early, well, no, we just got...
I was, I don't know when you got in.
So, just as, you know, as we move forward, this is a budget that, just as we've amended it tonight through appropriations, um, we can continue looking at it before, and it's something we need to adopt because we're approaching state.
I know, I just, I'm disappointed in the lack of time.
I have been here since eight o'clock this morning, working on just getting this all updated and ready, and I'm sorry I didn't have enough time.
We're, we're weeks behind, way, we're way weeks behind, we're not, like, a day behind, we're like weeks behind. So...
All right, just move on down to G, uh, Skoye Rural and Rural Energy Development Zone of Lake County. I have a better here from Betty Riley.
Just information, is that?
What's that?
It's just information at this point?
Right, yes. All right, let's move on down to LCP, Historic Inventory and Preservation. Ginger, you have anything to add to this?
Well, I'm sorry to tell you, I'm not sure what you have there. Is this something that was prepared by, um, the planner by any chance?
It's Ann Logan.
Ann Logan.
This is the one about establishing potentially a historical district.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I have not seen that, so I can't really speak to it. So, I know that having, I mean, Ginger's kind of been, we've been talking about in a lot of our, um, I don't know what you would call that group that we've... Partnership group. Partnership group. About having a real consistent theme, um, and expectation standards for the buildings downtown. And so, that is through that partnership group that we're really trying to work on, um, you know, being consistent for beautification of the downtown. So, maybe I can help a little bit. In 2016, the summer of 2016, Historic Preservation, um, came and did an inventory of the footprint of, you know, of downtown, and it's sort of loosely defined, and I'm not sure what your information is that you have there, but, um, uh, Janine Cannon has that report, I believe it was in the late 80s was the last time that you, that the council adopted, um, a historic inventory, and you've sort of been working off of that since that time. This has updated that historic inventory, and that may be what this is all about, without looking at whatever it is that you've got. I believe that's what it's about, and we have been talking about it in the, um, partnership meetings of the downtown organizations to, uh, develop a group that would work with the town to look at, um, all your ordinances. We've even had conversations with Janine about the possibility of state lands helping us with updating the ordinances and the codes. So I, this may be the preliminary to that, I, I'm sorry, I don't know more than that about it, but it's not something that will, um, happen tonight, overnight or in a month. It's a long-term, you know, process of, of starting to look at all of that and try to, um, help the building owners and the businesses look at any future development, what that might look like, and trying to stay in the, um, you know, stay in the, inside the lines of what we already have, preserving that look, and yet making sure that we're, that, that things are safe and, um, taken care of. Does that help? I don't know.
And I, and I think that's what this is, is I enforce kind of just initial steps of what the council might wanna do for, whether you wanna adopt a historical district, whether you wanna do some kind of designations for certain types of buildings, and that's a process that, one, I think you're gonna wanna do a lot of public meetings with and get a lot of stakeholders together with, because again, there's two different extremes you go to, one, you can end up losing your historic character, or number two, you can end up straight jacketing development. So it's a very fine line, the legal issues, like I said, you can adopt a lot of standards that you want, you just wanna make sure you have plenty of public input, because this is a legislative decision, it can be challenged unless you get everybody to table, and ultimately then, if you put the standards out there, you're kind of stuck with them, so they need to be something that's flexible and workable and meets with your guys' legislative priorities. I can help design what you guys want, once I know what those parameters are, but developing those parameters, I would really recommend, a lot of places that have done it, really did a lot of community meetings, a lot of, bringing in a lot of stakeholders, so that they can really get that, if that's the council's pleasure for even going forward with this at all.
Ginger? So, this is, this is only an adoption of what inventory exists downtown right now that is considered to be historic by historic preservation standards at the state level. It is not, it is not designed, I mean, you could take it and go forward with what Jeff was talking about, but we don't have anything updated, um, since 1986. This will help, actually help Janine, I'm sorry, she's not here to speak to it, but this would actually help her, um, with any current, um, planning permits, et cetera, or whatever that comes to her regarding, uh, the downtown buildings. So, I mean, we just went through a little bit of a oopsie here with, um, Shue's Barber Shop, and that sort of, I mean, that brought it up again. We did the inventory, um, in 2016 because it hadn't been done for so long. They have the ability to come and do it and not cost any of us anything, and so we thought it was a good opportunity to do it then, so it would be helpful to the town and any of their work that they might be doing in terms of, you know, the, um, just to, to make sure that we know which buildings are designated by the state, what could possibly be historic in nature. So I, that's all it is. You don't have to go forward with what Jeff is talking about unless you decide to, and it is a monumental task, but, um, that's not really what we're asking at this point.
And if that's the case, that makes more sense, knowing what you have, and then then you can make decisions based on the data. I would just warn you, if you decide you wanna take the next step, do it slowly and carefully, and it's gonna consume a lot of your time, because it's a really, it's a complicated, there's, there's some tough interests you have to balance, development and preservation, that's all I'm warning you about.
Do we have a list, um, formal list of what is... There's, yeah, there is a report, Janine's got it, I, you know, I've got, I can definitely get it to you guys if you need it, if you want it, seems like you ought to have it. Yeah, I'd love to, I'll ask Janine.
It would be nice to have it, if you get that one.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting, it's very interesting.
Okay. Let's move on down to the Oregon Petal Posse.
Rules are name and, name and location, which probably is Daddy. I'm sort of a pitch fitter tonight because, um, the person who was gonna present to you is Tom Daddy, and he's, um, part of a group of people being interviewed by Channel 11 tonight about Forest of War in Lakeview, so that was sort of important. Um, as part of the Petal Posse, um, I actually spoke to you over a year ago, letting you know that we were interested in getting some functional, attractive bike racks in the downtown core in Lakeview, and with your approval and interest, um, the Petal Posse and Tall Town Biking Camp ran a contest, we had over 20 entries, and chose the, um, bike rack design that we thought most, uh, was both most functional and most attractive, and really showed, um, who we are and what we are, put us on the map, and so I'm coming back to report on that, to give you a copy of the design and to request some funding to make this happen. Um, I don't want to just read over the documentation that you've already been given, um, I'm hoping it was really complete and that I can mostly answer questions. We have, um, over 18 different businesses in town and Occupy East Street that have specifically expressed an interest in having these bike racks, those businesses have seen this design, and, um, so we wanna go forward with it. Um, bike racks are a really great thing in the community, I have copies if anybody would like this. Um, bike racks are a great thing in the community because they show community spirit and morale, they act as a cue for motorists to, um, slow down and pay attention, to look for pedestrians, not just cyclists or pets, things like that. They also let, um, traveling cyclists and tourists know that you are open for business and that you're welcoming to them. Um, the design we chose, we're really happy with the idea that it tells us, tells anyone looking at the bike racks who we are. Um, it contains the Rollers Oregon Outback, which is the travel Oregon destination, um, keyword for this part of the state, and it has a map of the state with the little cowboy boots where Lakeview is located, giving a nod to the Kick Off Your Boots and Starewell campaign that the County Chamber of Commerce is doing. So it sort of embraces all of those different identities, um, and embraces our, our place in the state and our place in the community. Bottom line on the bike racks is that we tried to, um, find someone local, and there was no one with the bandwidth to do the kind of volume that we're hoping room to need, and we went to some corporate players who do bike racks nationally, internationally, and the quotes that we received for these ran from $300 to $500 a piece. We then talked to the Oregon Correctional Enterprises, which is the group at the Salem Penitentiary that does metalworking, um, with inmates, to give them a, um, job skill that they're able to use once they get out. The, um, cost quote we got from them was right at $250 per rack, plus a really hefty shipping fee, so Occupy East Street has volunteered to, um, go to Salem, pick up the racks for us and bring them back, so that we won't have any shipping fees at all. All it would cost would be just the racks. Um, the special cement lag bolts that attach them to the ground are something that ACE is going to source for us and give us a really good price on. So what we're looking for is the cost of the racks and the bolts from ACE, and then a waiver from the town if there are any, um, planning fees related to making sure that we cite them in ways that are appropriate to the town. Um, my husband and I have been lucky enough to work on bike rack projects in other communities and know that some communities, the Public Works Department, um, chooses to take possession of the bike racks because they were paid for by public funds and install them and make sure that they're okay in that perspective. Um, another option is to have a public service organization like Occupy East Street take control of them and do that on behalf of the town, and that would be up to you. So the bottom line ask is for 25 bike racks and all of the accoutrements to get them installed is $7,500, and then just the decision from the council whether they want the bike racks to be housed at Public Works and have Public Works install them, or if they would like for them to be housed by Occupy East Street and have Occupy East Street and the Petal Posse install them. And I'm here to answer questions.
Are they the same design as what we already have, or are they...
They are the design that's on your paper, and it's the...
I didn't look at it.
It is the same design that, um, yeah, okay.
So it's, it seems like we've approved signings for bike racks in the past, am I, am I not, remember something, Greg?
Just the two. The two. Yeah.
Bigger than this, or, you know, one concern I had about these was, um, it seems like it's barely, I mean, they're small, and it seems like, are we only, only conveniencing two bikes, it seems like?
Right, this is, this...
Not, you can't get them on the inside of the holes too.
This is a basic bike staple, which is sort of the international standard for a bike rack, and what this allows you to do is to either do a bike rack, um, our suggestion is like, as an example, two on each block, on each side of the block going down East Street, and then in front of other businesses that want them. Um, if that becomes not enough by parking, um, you move from this to what's called a bike corral, where you would put multiples of these at a 45-degree angle to each other, and doing them that way, you take up one car parking space and can get 26 bikes on it.
So these go on the road?
No, these go on the right of way on the sidewalk. So if you're looking at the sidewalks on, um, East Street as an example, you have the curb, and then these are about 14 inches in off the curb, so you still have plenty of room for handicap right of way and pedestrian right of way between the bike rack and the building, but the bike rack acts as a street furniture to... But the bike rack acts as a street furniture to disturb car-person interaction. And studies have shown in traffic and pedestrian safety that having something in that space between the curb and where most people walk make people feel safer, make them more likely to use pedestrian access to take walks, to walk their dog, whatever.
But my concern, just thinking that with our issues with our lack of space, is probably the easiest, is I would worry. So you want them removed, is it typical that they were removed? Why couldn't they just leave them out, or anywhere?
They would be, not be removed, they would be permanent.
Okay.
That's why they're up on the sidewalk, rather than in them. Storing, storing them while you're waiting to install them.
Oh, okay. Is, my concern would be that people would hit them in the winter months because of the snow and the issues with sliding a lot.
Well, if people hit, if people slide enough that they go up off the curb.
And ended up on the curb.
If you go up onto the curb, onto the sidewalk, that's possible. And my thought would be, I would rather have them run over a bike rack than go all the way into a building. Because we can replace a bike rack for $250 bucks, and it would take lots more than that to replace a building.
Yeah, true.
Or the window of a building, or the front door of a building.
So I really like the design. I wish the boot was up just a tiny bit, but that requires to move town. But I also wish that Lake County itself, the whole county was outlined. I think it would look, it would look cool.
I, I think it would be cool, but we designed, are we?
This is the design that won.
Right, this is the design that won. Thank you, Megan McGowan.
Megan McGowan's in the room?
Yes, it's, McGowan's are in the room, but it was their daughter who designed this. When we put this together, we put it together specifically as a town of Lakeview project, because we wanted to come to the town council to request funds. We weren't focusing on Lake County so much, as we wanted something that was the town. And if the county decides that they really love them, and we want to do a version of it, or they want to make it bigger, then maybe they could give us money to add some new casing and A.D.A. plush as well.
Daryl, do these cause you any concerns for placement or anything along those lines? Are they fine with how they're talking about them for ADA?
I'm sure we could find a place to put them. There's some places they want to fit, there's other places.
Right, there's lots of places they want to fit. I've, I've placed these, and I've worked with ADA before to place them, and we have sidewalk access all over Lake County that is wide enough to accommodate these and ADA. In fact, all of the places where I listed that we would like to have them installed, and businesses that are interested in them, I've gone out and measured. And we have plenty of room to do them and ADA and other things as well.
That's the only concern that I have.
So, as F Street is actually, I mean, does ODOT have any say?
I think you would have to, I think, I think you would have to double check with ODOT.
But if they're on the sidewalk?
If they're on, remember, they're still within the right of way. So the only suggestion I would have before you go much further is, at least as long as the F Street ones, is have ODOT, because they complain about the Sandwichport signs and stuff that are out there. So I would get there, I would talk with them first to make sure that they're not gonna, and.
Do you have a timeline on how soon these can be made, doing?
Well, if I get approval, and I talked to Oregon Corrections the last time I talked to them, they think they could have them ready for me in six to eight weeks.
So before fairing, before and around it?
Before random, yes.
I don't know, I like the idea, but I would like to do a little more studying on this, as to see actually where they're going to be and stuff, before I go forward with my stuff.
So, so, I, before you, thank you. I think we should move on this, I mean, we dropped the money from the $70,000, this is absolutely.
This is absolutely tourism, you have no issue.
Tourism 100%, so, I mean, we're going into another calendar year and having a very nice beginning front balance. We can work out the details later. I think what we should approve tonight is moving forward on having, you know, this.
Having them built.
Having them built, and then we can discuss with Janine after she talks with ODOT on where they go, and maybe we can come back on another meeting.
And I kind of geek out a little bit, because I'm a tourism person as well as everything else. We were specifically looking at bike head funds for this, as opposed to tourism dollars, because even though they are attractive to tourism, and they would increase tourism in the area, we're specifically, you know, like Ms. Taylor said, for the kiddie park and other places where local people are more likely to be the ones using them. And it will hopefully increase local cycling participation, not just tourism.
I would definitely agree to this, but I would, while we're at it, might as well do enough to do the kiddie park, in my opinion. And now, if I remember correctly, the ones that Albertson Construction is up at the pool, right? So that one's taken care of. Is it F already?
One or two.
Okay, yeah.
But folks, they're still, they're still viewable to the public, so you can use tourism for all of it.
Because there's not enough money in our bike path.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter that locals are using them as well.
Yeah, it's tourism.
Yeah, it's tourism promotion.
There's not enough funds in our bike path to cover it.
But it's tourism, we have the money, so it's, I mean, either way, I think we've got a consensus in what's going to be the most.
And we're, you know, we're totally, we know where we want exactly the ones on East Street, because Occupy East Street has been working on that.
What you have is 25 that you were planning, that you asked for here.
I asked.
But if we're talking about the kiddie park, then.
How many more would you need?
I think that one, just because it's a significant number of traffic there, you have to at least house probably like six bikes would be a more ideal.
The only thing you need to be careful of, and you might want to buy like six or 10 extra.
That's what I'm thinking.
So you can have them and put them in other places, you're thinking you might want them. Because while they're doing it, it's always easier to get a bite and bolt and get it done once, than try to give them, spin up another project.
And the kiddie park is also one on the highway, so they have to, I mean, there's a side street, and one on the other street.
If far enough in and parking lot, I think that would be in the right place.
Would you be opposed to going back to the Department of Corrections and asking them if they'd give you a better deal if we did 35 of them?
I would not be opposed to that at all. And in fact, I would love the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I think 35 is a better number, that we have some cushioning, and then we can reach kind of the outer boundaries a little bit more.
Well, that, and if we have one or two spare, basically, no matter, we can go and replace them also.
So I will make a motion to approve the funds for 35 bike racks from Oregon Correctional Enterprises and lag bolts, to the tune of, um, $9,500?
Not to exceed $10,000.
Oh, you said not to exceed $10,000, that way you cover the lag bolts, not, yeah.
There you go, oh yeah, so we're going to need extra lag bolts, yeah.
We're going to be simple now.
So not to exceed $10,000.
And one of the things you mentioned earlier was how, where to house them, either at the county yard, or county yard, or Occupy East Street. If you guys got the manpower, I mean, I, I don't see why we'd have a problem with you guys doing it.
Between the Pedal Posse and Occupy East Street, we do have the manpower and the commitment to get it done. And we would be working with Janine and the town and the leaseholders everywhere to put them in to make sure that they met all of the guidelines for both the state and the Fed and ADA.
I would just request you make sure you loop Daryl into that as well, just so that way we can keep him that. He's kind of our expert on those kind of things, out of the ADA, and especially if ODOT gets involved, he's going to help you out quite a bit.
Yeah, if anything on F Streets, Jeff, we're going to have to be approved by ODOT.
I'm not sure that you're going to get the public works people, because they have been taught.
Yeah, that's, I, I.
I'm sure you second your motion.
Nobody yet?
I have.
You made the most.
I will.
My motion tonight?
If you.
My second? To buy, well, how many?
35. Not to exceed $10,000 for 35.
And work with Janine and Daryl and.
May I make a second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the vote.
Thank you, and before I sit down, I want to thank the council for having an evening meeting. We've had this proposal basically ready to go for months, and couldn't get off work to be here, so we really appreciate that, thank you.
I just have a quick, I have it right here, are they going to use the tourism funds? Is that what I heard correctly?
Yes.
Okay, great, are we going to put boots on there too, on the eastern part of that Oregon?
Yes, there's a little baby boot on there.
Oh, there are boots on there, I'm sorry, I didn't even mention that on there. I got this.
They are black red iron at this point.
Okay.
Because that is kind of, makes good use of the 1910 when most of everything downtown was built.
All right, let's move on.
Yeah, thanks. Move your stuff.
Mayor Council, let me know your updates. Council, do you have any?
Is he like counting, is that a P?
Oh, there you go.
Oh. I thought you said county.
So, I would like to know, and I guess I should have brought it up on the budget, when do we think will be year to date that we've been, that we need? Is year to date budget? Don't we need all the pages that we requested yesterday? When can we get that?
The financial statements?
Yes.
I can, I'll try to print them out, even tonight, you've already gone home. I just didn't have a opportunity today, so.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I just haven't really seen one, a complete one, in my experience, in my life.
Well, I know about it, and I was communicating today earlier with Cassel, and they were trying to get interest allocations outright, and she said, we're working on that.
So Mayor, real quick, I just, you know, I'm, we're advertising on Link Oregon Cities until the end of May. I think we need to repost on Link Oregon Cities, open until Phil.
In our website, which I already mentioned.
Sorry, done.
Okay, good.
And we also, you know, we were going to do the, in bulletin, it's too much.
What was it, though?
It's 125 bucks a day.
It's too much.
Oh, well, no.
And they are in bankruptcy right now.
Oh, great, yeah.
The newspaper.
Well, maybe we should advertise, we might get a person.
Thanks, because these aren't that nice.
But we did, we updated it.
Do you have anything?
Oh, yesterday we did have a meeting with the swim team. And I think it went very, very well, and so, because we had the swim team, and we had counselors, and we had Tana and the managers of the pool, and I, and some public, some aerobic people. And I think it went very well, so hopefully we can do that every year before we start up the pool. So, I think it went well.
A lot of positive input.
Yes.
Very productive.
So.
So it'd be nice to, to, like you said, before, well before the season runs, like, end of summer, we have a nice tee breed. Yeah, and then, you know, when, oh, well, you know.
However.
Kristen Hill came in last, last time, and had mentioned that she'd like to see more adult supervision.
She didn't understand a lot of it, and so I think after the meeting yesterday, because she didn't realize that Tana goes up there one or two times a day, there is adult supervision, and there's also some adult, Tana watches the kiddie park too. So, you know, we put it out for advertisement, for everybody to reply.
I'm not criticizing all the process from what we did before, I'm just.
I'd love to have them, you know.
Yeah, and that's why all this issue, you know, I wanted to get on as the liaison for this, and toward not including them in the law. But my fault for missing yesterday, which I really apologize for being at the courthouse till after midnight. So, I, yeah, I just want, as we move forward on this, Mayor, that we, you know, involve the liaisons on some of this, you know, decision-making on how we move forward and promote, now it's obviously going to be managed by the manager, the town manager, and hired staff, but the input from the liaison.
Well, and I know a lot of the stuff that was in the letter that was published in the paper and, and was inaccurate, and I declared a lot of things yesterday, so.
Let's move to public comment period. Do we have any public comments? Yes, Marich.
I just want to, I was here on the council when we hired the first town manager, and I know how difficult it is to find the right person, and I just want to wish you luck in doing so. And I hope there's somebody that will also live in town, as Roberta lives in town. I've always felt that the council has to live in town, and I think department heads and the town manager needs to live in town. On the note of tourism, I would like to see the sidewalks fixed up around the pool. That's been deteriorating for several years now. And also that tennis court up there, somebody needs to take that on as a project.
I'm working with Buddy Ness on that, and his people go clean that tennis court up, so we'll see what we need to do to fix those nets.
Good, well, we have a lot of tourists during the summer that use the pool and, and with our swim meets and whatnot. I've been involved in that for, not the late years, but my kids swim up there, and my grandkids swim, and I've been involved since 19, since they built the pool, in 1952. So, but that sidewalk needs fixed.
One, I agree, and one of the things that I was discussing with somebody is there's no ADA access there. And maybe with the repair of that sidewalk area, something can be done. A rail, perhaps, instead of those stairs, for ADA access. Something to look at for a project down the road. Because we do still have a lift in the pool, don't we? But really, how is anybody?
Can get them. Yeah, and we got a complaint today about the handrail getting up to there. There's no handrail up those stairs. So we addressed that, we addressed that today, that we'll try to get that taken care of, so.
You know where the sidewalk is that goes up the hill? I know it's got a hill. And then there's a gate right there on the back side. There's one on each side of that fence, on the corner, at 80. You can move it. Oh, the sidewalk in the park area, all the way up, and it goes up the back. But there is a spot where it goes, it's, it is, but it's still. Well, and that's good to know, because I don't even think most people even realize there's an access. There is a gate right there. But how, we have to call ahead, yeah, and say, hey, I'm coming around. Have been let in, and hopefully they know where the key is. How old is that lock?
It opens during every swim meet.
That's true, that's true, yeah.
It's there, it's on schedule.
Any other public comments?
Thank you.
I have a question here.
Yeah.
Can you just update us on the town manager situation? I know, Roberta, aren't you finished at the end of this month?
I did, I have volunteered to continue until they get a replacement, but then there was a, possibly a change on that, so I'm really in limbo, I don't know.
Okay, what, what is the status?
We've only had two applications in the name, and one of them was qualified.
So is it the plan that the town will be for a period of time without a town manager? And if that's true, can you just let us know how the, you know, the day-to-day operations of the town will be administered without that position being filled?
I'm not really sure just what our plans are just yet. We're discussing that, and trying, hoping that we do get somebody, but the problem we've got is that there's eight other openings for town managers out there.
Right, you know, sure.
Oh, wow.
There was four listed on this tape.
Unless we can find an intern, $100 for three months. Yeah.
We've got some ideas and some options, we're still trying to explore those. I mean, really, the biggest thing is getting the advertising out for the position still as well.
Which we just reviewed. But, but no one is going to start the next day after you accept them in a position, right? So there will be a period, I mean, we have one week left in the month, and so there will be a period of vacancy, just on a day-to-day basis. How will the town operate? Who will make the decision?
Well, we've kind of discussed it with Headland, you know, if there's legalities, Headland would cover things like that. Link Oregon Cities also is an organization we're part of that does handle some of our legalities as well, and oversight. But we pay to be a membership for that purpose.
So.
And CIS.
So Mayor, if I may ask a question, are we not going into executive with this as a possible item?
We have the executive session coming up, yeah.
And it specifically calls out the statute required, that we can have a discussion about this during. And then we can come out of the discussion and possibly give you a very straight answer.
Or at the next meeting.
Yeah, or at the next meeting, but your questions are very important, because, yes, we are coming on, this is the last week in the month, and contracted period, up until resignation, and then, but we still, in my understanding, unless I missed a meeting where we undid what we did before. I know limbo might be, how, it was undone? I don't know. Well, so, so anyways, yes, I think we need to give you a straight answer after this.
I think you're going to give me a straight answer.
We're all, spoke, the spot, right, we all.
Right. No, I'm not trying to cause trouble, but you know, we have department heads who take instruction from the town manager, so if there's a day that comes when we don't have a town manager, you know, who does Jeff report to? And, and what does he do? And when things come up, I mean, in our town, someone will have to make a decision. It just seems like there needs to be, you know, some kind of an interim, and we just don't know how long that will last.
Yeah, and we're very.
We're also going to get it set up.
Right.
Okay. I'm going to adjourn the regular session, we're not going to executive session, and then we'll come back to the regular session. So I have to.